Well, you said the contracts.
That's on the DR thing, on the Ford Street project. The finalization signature paper that I had signed was sent in yesterday. And it's in DR's hands as we speak now. And that's just for him, his bondy company to get all the bond ready to go. And he said that there's no problem, they're chomping at the bits.
Wonder when he'll get started?
It'll be ten days from the day that they release it. And from what Mike told me, it more or less would probably be the twenty-third there next week.
Oh, good.
That we would do the groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking, probably.
Notice per se?
Yeah.
Pre-construction thing.
Very good.
And he did text base and say that he is in the county.
Yeah. Local.
Local.
We've got a sewer and water project, we just got bid off. We'll fix to get it underway. Should be seven or eight months of work. It's gonna be a big upgrade to our sewer system as far as taking in infiltration. And the property owner that it's touching this time is really taking the bypass and making those lots commercial worth for a bigger bid.
Like bigger pipes?
Bigger pipes, different kind of pipes. We're on old clay system now and you just can't hook anything up to a clay system.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Atlanta has what they call CSO, Combined Sewer Overflow Systems. Is that kind of what you have if you get too much rainwater, it actually raises up and then will flood out into?
We don't have that problem. We're close, we were close to having that problem. But over the past eight years, we've put in a lot of sewer and really taken care of infiltration problem. This is, last project we done, it was estimated we took over a hundred thousand gallons off of our sewer system with infiltration. We're estimating this one will take pretty close to that weekly flow off of us, which just gives us more capacity for our sewer plant. And that in turn lets us look at bigger, broader ways of expanding sewer, getting that infiltration off. It don't matter what you're treating, if it's a gallon of water or a gallon of buttermilk, the state looks at it as a gallon. The more we can take off of that, the more we can offer the county and the town to expand.
Well, just for your information, I was on the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board and I was on the environmental committees and that's why I know about the CSO. I know way more than I ever wanted to know about how stuff goes to Atlanta.
Right.
You know, they're on big scales there in Atlanta, so that's a big scale.
Where do they get most of their water at, do you know that?
Well, it used to come out of the Chattahoochee and I think it went back into the Chattahoochee.
It did, yeah.
But I, gosh, it's been so long since I've been down there, I couldn't tell you today.
They've found, I think.
Other states and upstream and downstream and that's been a big problem for many, many years.
If no other old business.
Oh, I tell you, no business, we can go ahead. We just had Siemens, the outfit that put our plant income up into evaluation on the plant for the month it's been running. We passed with some flying colors on discharge, it was just great. Total operation of this plant was really good. One thing we gotta stay on top of is cotens on that plant is.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, just keep maintenance going and if we put a scratch in it or a dent, it's fixed, you know, don't let it. But everything's got an A plus or it's the way it's been run so far.
That was Todd Huffman with Siemens.
Two, what about on the sewer plant, did we hear anything from Thunderbird?
No, they met yesterday, we're supposed to met yesterday at ten o'clock, but Southwestern. And I've not heard no scuttle over how that went as of today.
Well, no business, I guess it'd be good, we're anywhere near a settlement?
No.
With Hickory Construction?
They have, they told me, the last conversation I had with him, they, the old man had contacted McGill and they had advised him that the clock is still ticking in our paper. And it's growing every day. And there's likely a settlement coming here in the near future because of their wanting paid and with McGill holding the purse string, they're holding a check up out that, you know, they need. But they've not finished in a, with the contract. And they're.
How much more time they got?
Well, we've had to ask for, we've had to ask for another, what, two months extension.
Well, that was ongoing.
Oh, going later.
So that was, but their pay request is less than liquidated.
Liquidated.
So that's why they've not sent the pay request to us because there's no sense, they lost it.
So we just hold, do a settlement?
Yeah, McGill's got that and they won't make a move until they were contacted and on. And they'd have to be at a meeting.
Yeah.
It'd have to be a meeting, either special or a regular session meeting. Any thing else further on low business? New business, ice and maintenance. Garbage truck, the back tires is balding on the outside end on all four tires on the back. I've got a price, they're calling the end price. And I suppose know about that. Also, I need two new weed eaters this year and a bush hog.
A bush hog?
The thing that you put behind the tractor. What you put behind the tractor. We've got the tractor, just need a bush hog.
Yeah, we've got like one straight in that shape.
I'll say we go ahead and take care of maintenance. We have to have stuff to work with.
And they're still only utilize what we've got, there's some, it's just maybe one more season, one good season left in it. They're having to work on it as they go through the day.
Okay.
But they use us on tires and stuff, they use us about.
I just want, just need to bring that to your attention, Cox.
Well, one thing on those steering tires.
The steering tires is good, that's the first thing I went down, they got over a half of an inch tread.
Just make sure we run them till they don't know you're seeing them. You know, you're running, you're running deals on both, on both sides.
Yeah. Uh, if all four blowing at the same time, it's slim to none.
And we don't go on no long trips?
No, right.
Just in town, I mean, we ought to wire those to the, you have to change. I mean, you're looking at six hundred something dollars a pop.
Oh, I know.
We don't get much wire on them, I would just run recaps in town. If we don't road haul and long haul, I'd just send them caps and take one off and cap it.
I got personnel on six.
All right, number two is Russell Wiggins' water bill.
Sherry, how much was he using, what out, his average and what out in that month?
How's Russell doing?
He said it's a cold, he stays with girlfriends most of the time, so.
It's probably a birthday then?
Yeah, or something. I said you could let the commode running there anytime.
Oh, yeah.
He looked pretty good back to normal when he come in here then.
Did he?
Same to him.
Russell at normal.
Considered, from what he used to look like.
I tell you what.
He's been through it.
He looked like he gained a little of the weight.
With the type of cancer he's got.
Sherry pulled up Ms. Griffins too.
Ms. Griffins?
Wilson coming in.
Oh, again. Russell's, he used nine thousand five hundred and ten gallons. The bill amount was one fifty-two ninety-seven and he's normally, he's always in everybody's school. And we did recheck it for any errors as far as the reading meter, it was read correctly and he said he didn't have any leaks or anything, so we don't know.
I tell you, I should come over and.
I say we give him a lead credit, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's his third.
Yeah. Also, Ms. Wilson out here. During the cove spell, she don't have nobody that looks after her and she's lost a memory at times. And during the freeze and all, Duke Power cut her power off, she was three days out there with no power during that cove spell. Two of her heaters caught on fire and Social Service and I think Mitch Carver.
I thought Mitch Carver was supposed to be the one.
It had to go through the court and the DSS and her approval. And it's taken time and Mitch is not be picking up on that. But he's had to buy two hot water heaters and a commode, change the commode totally out. I mean, it was wore the.
She made another lead credit?
I don't know, how many were due?
Well, her bill is still, it's like two thousand five.
She's got, for months, she's run five hundred dollars.
Taylor, but say she just don't, she don't work here, which is Taylor.
Yeah, she's.
She really don't need to be alone.
But I think, as I came back from the sewer plant, I circled around and.
What do you think, you think they'll have?
Mitch is going by every day now. And he was out there this morning. He was out there this morning and he was out there right before I got here and then third.
I'll take it, Greg.
Okay.
Now, let's see, how much was her bill?
She got two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars forty-three cents for it now.
Have they rechecked it lately?
Yeah.
Is it still high or is it still?
Does she not have any family?
You can see what she's running, she's running thirty dollars a month, thirty-six dollars a month. And here she's, my God.
That's who she asked for.
Yeah. Look, the gallons of thirty-one thousand in that month, forty thousand.
I know.
You know, that's a whole time.
She's leaving a whole, is it baking down there or what?
Her basement?
Yeah.
Chase went to door that one time, he read it and she says, step in here, I don't have nothing running. And Chase said the carpet, you stay up and carpet was wet where it was running. And he said, yeah, you're gonna leak coming in here tomorrow because your carpet's wet. And went in there and the stopper was in the sink and it was just, just drizzling over. And, you know, it, that's bad, that's one of the bad things about getting old and no family.
Let's try to help her on this till they can get her some, maybe they can get her somebody that can check on her.
They're looking about two, maybe to get her thing fixed right or maybe they might be somebody that could move in and live in.
Why can't we for, to make sure Mitch is doing his job, can we not send somebody by there?
Davey and Reed.
We may do it three days, we may have three days going on looking at it.
Something's gonna close her basement out.
They've got the water outlet basement, it's cut off in there. She lived back in the day when you left your water running in the winter time, it didn't freeze.
You done that till April.
She must have never spoken to you.
Yeah, she did, you know, she did.
Let's try to help her out.
But forty thousand gallons, that's.
Let's know that since it improves.
Yeah. Till we can help her.
They won't let do.
Number three would be the sewer receiving station.
What we found out about that?
They have opened it.
They have opened it, they're running it.
It was about the water.
And it's about the two-inch meter, the cost of, and I've not heard nothing back, anything back from Greg. I think the bill was taken over and presented to him and he said he'd have to get with his board before he could make a decision.
That'll be fine.
We told them, they just had to measure it?
If they measure it and.
That two-inch meter and the taps and everything's gonna be about, about, probably two thousand. First time put it in, if the county will pay for that and put it in, we can do unaccountable water on that receiving station. Which, that basically is gonna clean up what's coming to our plant anyway.
And help break it down.
It'll help us in the long run, we're gonna get it anyway. But I don't think the folks in town should have to pay for that meter for that project, I mean, that's theirs. So it's up to them if they, if they wanna put the meter in, we'll help them. We tried, we tried to do away with that receiving station, have them out on me at one time and the loads we got down there, we just had so much foreign matter in them that we couldn't process. I mean, there was towels and tuba fours and just anything, they'd go up in a vacuum truck, pieces of wood.
Canes, wooden cans.
It's not designed, ours is designed to process, you're right, Jackie. And I don't think they can see that we can't process beach towels and we can't process.
And what they got will catch them out.
Well, so he's a grinder too, he's got the grinder, they're got a grinder plus it aerates.
Yeah, but everything's caught before it gets there.
Oh, yeah.
Their grinder front, they can't process us.
No.
And if they're dumping it down, it's.
It's topping their barstool.
If we shoot it from there down, here it'll solidify with everything else.
Right.
I'll water it down a bit, let them wait.
Right.
You do too, that's.
You know that? What they got out there is good for removing debris and as long as they take the fire service and porta johns and stuff that can get foreign debris in it, it's gonna be hard, I mean, it's gonna be hard to treat. But we can't treat that, we could treat.
Safety tanks is no problem, Cox, you're not gonna get a, you're not gonna be able to flush beach towel down your toilet at house. But you go to one of them porta johns or one of them stationary tanks that you're sitting above, whatever, you can get down that hole or go through a four-inch pipe that we second out there will be dumped in our station.
And, you know, boot string.
We pay ten less taxes running beach towels, they ain't gonna run. I didn't know it was got in the fight with the county.
No, and I mean, you know, we don't have, we don't, in city limits, no, there is no safety. It's off the sea sewer. So, I mean, you know, that, that kinda tied the county with, hey, help me second. We've got to look out after the people out here in the county. And it's on their side there, it went for what, six or seven years and didn't even run, did it, Jake?
Oh, that, well, they ever opened it from the time they built it, Bobby, you know it been open. And Bobby Jane, they tell me go down there and ask the county to just let us try and sit with it and work because they said, no, it don't work because McGill designed it, that's what they said.
That's what they said.
So when we run two thousand gallons though, they had to open it.
It works.
That stuff, it not worth, we was willing to take the risk on it to show them that thing was working because we had faith in the McGill engineering and they did. And by the way, our sewer plant's working, they designed it, they're going to record for that. And their wells and their tank and their water lines and sewer lines.
And so McGill's are down.
And fixing start on this new one here too. Bust two more beds, it's in. Okay, veterans' fee rate code.
Harold Phillips, the county gave the VFWs, the senior center, and Moose Branch. Okay, and Harold wanted me to check with you guys to see, they went and read off the meter, so it's something building for the county but that's kinda curious on the fees as far as the transfer fee or the deposit. If you can kind of help them with that there. And also they want to know about as their monthly charge. And I said, well, I have to check with them on the rate code, is it just like a residential rate code or if you can, we consider it like a business rate code.
Lowest rate, we would give one.
I think so too.
Yeah, it'd be the lowest rate.
What we need to do, we can waive those fees on the meter installation and that charge. And I would check with, I'll check with Mike and just to make sure on the legal aspect that we can give them with a business rate or residential rate.
Residential.
My understanding, are they gonna try to fix a bedroom up in that place for a homeless bed?
I am a member and I have not heard anything about a bedroom in there. There's a, the guy down here in the veterans' office that we're gonna try to put one of the rooms, have him move down there because that makes a good place for rooms. And then we're gonna also share it with the VFW. So you have both the American Legion and the VFW, we just changed nights of our meeting because that made a lot of sense.
What we're saying is it gonna be residential or did?
Yeah, if they did do that, I know at one time they were looking to try to put a room somewhere for a homeless bed if you passed there and didn't have any more to go.
Well, I have not heard anything about that at the last couple of meetings, so. But we do thank the county and, you know, having that facility is just absolutely wonderful.
Oh, yeah.
But the first thing that everybody talked about is how are we going to pay all these things? The electricity bills and all, you know, war.
Well, I think we should do everything in our power to keep it as low as a rate as we can.
And no charge on any of the?
No, any transfer or anything like that.
Well, do I have permission to mention that to Harold next time I see him? You all are very receptive, being nice to him.
Well, he's, well, he's.
I think we've set a base rate on.
Base, yeah. I think it's, it's a nonprofit and I think that was more, if it's nonprofit, if that's nonprofit.
I said, make a motion, we just set them on a base rate, whatever the base rate is for a home and for a lady.
Excuse my fall.
Oh, don't answer it, I like the song.
Me too.
So if we, you know, if we have done something that, that somebody complained about it, that would be a good, I'll take a black out on that.
I will too, anything to help with that.
I'll do what we have to.
That's exactly right.
I think, I think that base rate in town rate is what, how much?
Forty-one ten.
Forty-one ten, water and sewer base rate, so it costs forty-one ten a month.
And if we could, I know we can't give them that, but if we could, I'd be for giving that to them.
I would too.
Somebody to check into.
We check into it.
We can check into it, you know, we'd have to do a rate, let's do that and let one, Steve get up with Mike and see, you know, see if we can waive before a VFW bathroom, waive the forty-one ten.
I just remember what Mike told us when we come in here.
About fire.
Fire department and all that.
We got some trouble.
I know, we got trouble over that.
But now bathrooms are different, they, they, they's a. I think he said no.
I think he did. Yeah, I think he did.
They did say no.
But I hope he's wrong on this.
We can still see, check into it.
We don't want to charge them anything, I think the law just requires it.
It takes her to get forgiveness and permission anyway.
That's exactly right.
Number five is Dr. Mountain Creek. We got a call Monday, water lake. We went to this residence and they had a water lake and we went to cut it off and the locking apparatus and the padlock was laying inside the meter. And the water was squirting and the water was locked in, oh, April of oh-eight. And since the reading of April of oh-eight, it was, it has, to present day, is two hundred and fifty-some thousand gallons of water has flown through that meter since oh-eight. And it has been locked and after, after it goes so far, it kind of erases off your screen. It's still in your memory, but, and that was a locked meter and I know at one time there for a month ago, there wasn't nobody in the house, but then.
Is these people that sound out?
These people, yeah.
There's never been change and nobody ever done.
Some family, it's.
I think that's something for Mac.
I think that's a legal.
It's very, it's legal, that'd be for Mac to take care of.
And it being under, I think it's, it's under five thousand, that'd have to be a small claims first.
Five thousand?
He says we didn't, we cleared that.
And we have got the, got the, what come out of the meter now, where they look like they ran the screwdriver inside of it and ripped the plastic, bonnet, thing and covered the meters.
Are they still, are they still getting water?
Yeah.
Now?
We should have had them cut off.
Well, that's what.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, they got it fixed yesterday.
Well, this right here, I mean, was they getting water before the meter was cut off?
Yeah.
Same people? And we locked the meter down and then they used it for six years?
And their thing, their, their, their thing was is they was told and that's how I broke, found out that there's, there's more wood that's been added far and near. We was told that the water line across our property, we get water free. But you go back in history and they had been paying water bills up to this certain point till it was cut off and.
Was you hearing they cut it off, sir?
In a way. She, this lady here had came to a meeting or two, had she?
Well, she'd actually just stepped in here, she got pre-irate a few times over the water situation up there and over paying and it being cut off due to not paying. And they did get reconnected back and then it went again and they never did get connected back. And we always recheck it for a month or two after, make sure it's okay, but then after that, no, we don't go back and recheck it.
That's like what I've implemented now, anytime anything is blocked, any meter is locked, every month that they come by, they, because they have to drive by that house, they go and visually check and make sure that thing's still on. Or I tell you, I've told them, if it's jumped, to just shut the lid back and come up here and get me because I want to go over there with my camera and I want to take a picture of it and then we'll handle it from that situation.
You got pictures of this one?
No, well, the boys do.
I think we need to talk to Mike, see what he says.
I told, I told Sherry to go ahead, to go ahead, to go ahead and bill last month and this month's too. Go ahead and generate that bill because we know it, they had water last month.
Add it on to the other, go and get it locked up.
And when Mac makes it down, it's pretty quick.
Yeah.
You want it pulled, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got the meter physical pull.
Now?
Yeah.
Don't you think we ought to, up six years?
I think it ain't gonna be a pull like that.
Well, we had to fix the.
Broke the line.
Yeah, it broke the, it broke the line.
Those people, there's a cousin that put it up.
That's how you found it, that's how you found it, oh. That the gal provided.
Mm-hmm, right there, right, yeah.
Well, they get water, you know, it was broken.
Yeah, still.
Oh, goodness, unreal. We'll let Mac see what he says about that.
If he says small claims court, let's do that as well.
Yeah, we can do that, oh, yeah.
Cause it'll be, yeah, that'd be, yeah, they're making that off that one.
Uh, just a little update on uh, our seminar with software. Uh, it's basically, we at one time had a form of it with a handheld meter reading. Readers and the uh, uh, some of their software, their software trying to be added to. Our older system. And neither one, it's kinda like trying to add electricity to water. It, 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 it would function up to, it really make major contact. And trying to reverse back or add to or, or take, pull this one out, it would just. It'd go crazy, the computer go crazy, just about locked down. And it wasn't compatible and all, and they in turn, you know, they, they'd like to save you a whole, they'd like to save you a battle shield, complete battle shield.
They'd like.
But uh, uh, based then a bid package to me by mail, by email. And uh, it was consisting of a utility building and collections, which basically is, would be what we'd be. I feel like we'd be more interested in anything just for purpose of entering on a different software.
It would be just tr-
Just, just a trap.
Complete system transfer, if you would, it would be, because I don't think they, they didn't put any charge in there for the utility since they had it, they could update it.
Yeah.
But this was the county.
This, this, this would be the whole change and everything we've got. And uh, this, this here and that, and that would be with, with training and support and all be twenty-three thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
Let me ask you this, is that, you know, we've got, part of it's about the tax problems compatible with the county?
That the taxes is not.
Would be.
No, because.
Are we compatible with the county now? What can, there's something we can do, I need to.
Let them collect.
Well, yeah, I know, but I mean, but we, we'll be pulling up the records and stuff here, huh?
We can pull up our records, but Anna still gives me like the tax roll.
She does.
Yeah, she gives me a tax roll and then we pay it into the system and then we, uh.
But if we, if we had that software that was compatible with them, we wouldn't even have. Well, there's one guy, we talked to one of those places that.
I'm not, and they might have something, I, I.
Yeah.
I didn't ask them a lot about the taxes because I didn't. The taxes was something I didn't.
That was because that was totally, I mean, you know, we don't even have the access to the tax roll.
Well, I mean, it's just. The cost, the cost.
Yeah.
For what we get in taxes for a whole new program is really not feasible.
Feasible for.
Hell, yeah, one, one, one thing we look with. Our, our co-op at the county is, is, you know, what Graham County says, is that we pay that. So we, I don't know, we're looking into Praeger's, we're looking.
No, 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 we don't have to go along, Bob, I'm saying is, we had one, one computer this, that, that ended there, we, we could still go on and on, get them fine and then bring it out. That, that, we'd have access right into it.
They can't, they can't do that.
They can't do that.
Cause we're not certified.
Certified, we need certified.
We can't have their information. Even though it's the towns because there's the certification issue.
What, you know, we, we've bounced it back for years over, over collecting back taxes.
I mean, I don't know. We had come to where they would do it for three percent and which would basically cost us, say, seven, I think it was either five to seven thousand a year.
On back taxes.
That's cur- current year, that was current year, three percent on current year. Ten percent is what they wanted on the back taxes, but they wanted the back taxes the day, say if it was January fifth, they want it on January sixth. But we wasn't willing to give them at that time because the back taxes, they could collect it, say from year four, current year four, but. You need the month of January to do your, because there's plenty that straggle in through January. Y'all paying, if you pay a ten percent penalty for the ones that come in January, that's gonna be a, a huge hit. Because a lot of people pay in January.
We, we've offered it this several years in a row, let's just quit blowing with it. Might as well go, you know, look for somebody to do it.
But, yeah, we had that.
They would get a thing, they beat dead doors, we tried to work and tried to get them, you know.
Well, they collect taxes, that's, uh, and that's these old county employees, probably they sent us one the other day.
Well, 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 yeah, but let's just go ahead and, let's just go ahead and outsource it, if they don't want to blow it, let's go ahead and outsource them and get them.
Yeah, let's do that.
Do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna talk to them, but I ain't.
I mean, it's probably the information, everywhere else was go right on, print off the information.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we do it and we collected it for years and it's okay.
Send their buddy, send, send their buddy later, it's got.
The bike tags.
Yeah, from like four to uh, twelve, forty.
We all gonna turn it over to, to an agency.
If we can.
Let's don't do thirteen yet, because what says the papers gonna come in and play.
Yeah, there, it's likely that, we'll do the second notice, say on the uh, we always do that. Well, it's usually about June, we usually did the second notice for uh, thirteen. And then it'll print out everything, we'll just send up the second notices and it's gonna put.
Well, I'm talking about, let's send them a good letter about.
Yeah.
Like the county sent us about garnishing wages and, and let's send them a nice one, so we're gonna turn it over to a collection agency and they will pay for the cost.
Garnish your, garnish your chicken camp first.
All right, they will pay for the cost, they will, from four to through twelve. I make a motion that we go from four to twelve and was, tell them we're gonna turn it over to the collection agency. And uh, they'll, they'll garnish you and whatever they have to do, they'll lean on it or whatever.
Second. You know.
I send it out to them with their next couple of surgeons, we can get it drafted out, make sure Mac reads it to make sure it's legal.
It'd be best to go out, say on May first, that way that all the entries and everything's calculated and it's good for that full month, that'd be.
I bet we're gonna wait for it that way, give them time to come in, we'll figure it as of May first. Say starting May first.
I'd say it'd be May first with Mac, if he's gonna back up the letter.
Okay, that sounds good, I'm ready with you on that.
I'd say that, I mean, cause if you calculate it, right now it only calculates through the end of April.
I mean, the county sent me a dollar fourteen cents, a dollar fourteen, a dollar forty-one cents, but it's gonna garnish you in my wages and a dollar.
They're gonna put a attachment on Chase's checking account for ten dollars and twelve cents.
They didn't even pay the forty-two cent stamp.
Eight year ago.
But, see if they do that, but they, they add the cost of doing it to it, they can add, they can't.
Yeah, and they, they can also, y- y- you are responsible for the fee of the garnishment.
Yeah.
The cost of the garnishment.
I was thinking about set that one, but we don't.
Yeah, see, that can fluctuate from seventy-five dollars up to a hundred and fifty.
My dollar forty-one cents could have been like fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents. I appreciate that, that helped my eyes on that.
Good boy.
I'm glad they're on their job over there, on their toes.
And uh, it was hand delivered with no stamp.
Well, they know that we're public, sure you get some garnishing, you have to do it, don't you?
Yeah.
And we look at uh, at those sewer and water rates for public buildings, we looked up this year, it wasn't developed anything on those. For public buildings. On sewer and water rates. Like courthouse and.
Everything's on a hundred percent collection, isn't it?
Is it hundred?
Oh, wait, it's ninety-eight, it's a hundred water, ninety sewer.
Yeah.
Well, they, they want.
We're fixing to be.
Yeah, right.
Quite a few meetings.
And it pulls on us.
Yeah.
Handicap.
Coming the next, within the next couple weeks, it's gonna be a pretty wide open.
Right. Uh, really, I mean, the, the cost of, of our material done, our electricity run. That, that's something that wasn't even figured into the budget that, we're gonna be having to figure in that extra cost to our budget next year for that new water plant. Uh, is the, uh, depending where it goes, a hundred, a hundred. No, has to go to a hundred, a hundred, I mean, there's totally a.
You think state funding on my part has got a state fund, don't it, it'd be a hundred anyway.
Right. Uh.
I mean, we tried, not, boring, you know, you did a lot of things with it, you know.
All right, have we gotten anything else before we have to go into personnel?
You got anything?
I don't reckon it's personnel.
We just got, we got one added, uh, our, our uh, agenda. Just covers one through five, but we got one thing we have to deal with, we had number six here in open session forward here. It, it is for person to discuss uh, some personnel on uh, uh. More forty-three.
Stage three eighteen, eighty-six.
So you're going into closed session?
Yeah.
Just a session.
And then we'll finish.
Then we'll finish, we'll come out.
Well, I hope you've learned something about the town.